Okay, we'll move on to item three, the Budget Work Session, and its discussion and consideration of all aspects of the fiscal year 25 Black Hawk County budget. Today, we have Kathy Nickless, county engineer and secondary roads here to do a presentation. Thank you, Kathy.
Today, we have a lengthy presentation for you. We'll try to go as fast as we can. It's broken down into three parts. We're going to be talking about some of the deficiencies of our current Longfellow Maintenance Facility and why we are asking at this time to consider looking at replacement options, as well as looking at a concept proposal for you. And then lastly, I would like to talk to you about what I'm going to call Fleet Management for the county. So let's start our look this morning with a tour of the Longfellow Maintenance Facility. This is, it's in northwest Waterloo. I'm sure you're all familiar with it. I think you've all been out to our site over the years, some of you more recently than others. You can see that Longfellow, our site is bounded by Longfellow Avenue on the east and then Midland Street up here on the north side, and then this is WCFN as we go along with the eastern border of our site. And this is our main facility. It was built in nineteen sixty, excuse me, nineteen fifty-nine. We've occupied this 24-acre site since the early, the early 50s, the mid-50s, so we've been out there a long time. And let's just take an aerial view of the location. So the main maintenance facility was, like I said, built in nineteen fifty-nine. It was cinder block construction at the time, a very small shop. Over the years, we did add several wash bays in the back. And then in 2004, we added this larger structure here for our main mechanics bay. We have a west shed here, and then a north shed here where Bridge Crew does some work. And now, we're looking at some of our entire property here where we have, where we store our plows during the off-season, some metal, guardrail-type metal, et cetera. You can see our hoop building there that holds our salt, our salt dome. It was also built in nineteen sixty, nineteen sixty-two. A lot happened in nineteen sixty-two that year. Moving along, you can see some more storage for steel components. And then this would be the backside, looking now to the east at our facilities. You can see the hoop structure again, and then our salt dome here that we re-roofed with styrofoam roofing just about five years ago or six years ago. And then this is a good look at our north shed. It's where we currently have our cold storage facility, where we store vehicles that we don't need to be, the snow to thaw in the evenings, or the afternoons in the evenings. And then this is moving out into the northwest portion of the site, looking right now at where we would like to construct a new facility in the future. So moving on, just some of this I've already repeated. Our current main maintenance facility, our mechanic shop, was built in nineteen fifty-eight. It is currently 66-years-old. At the time, it was, when it was built, it was very small. It had two offices, a break room, and then two or one-and-a-half bays to do maintenance on our vehicles. And then, as I said, over the years, there have been some additions to the back portion of the facility. This was a wash bay, and now it is our sign storage facility. And we're going to tell you a lot more about the interior of the facility now. I'd like Wayne to, if you want to come up, Wayne, and give us some comments on the interior of this building.
Yeah, I guess this next picture here, Kathy, is superintendent's office and the road foreman are in there? It's very crowded right now. The room is only 11-foot by 11-foot. And we also could use like a table in there, or a little bit bigger room, because sometimes that's where we have our disciplinary with the workers, so we want confident, confident in their area. So it also is not very airtight, so it gets really dusty and dirty in there, and it's really hard on our computers. And we've got the fuel system in there with that computer stuff, too. Go on to the next one, would be the break room. Right now, we've just got some picnics tables in there. We also have, gonna have some computers in there for the guys to get on, our phone systems in there, and it's really hard to keep it clean. And there's no, not enough space in there for any large meetings of any kind in there. Then off to the mechanics office, offices. Right now, that top-left picture is only six-foot wide, and we've got a lot of diagnostic tools in there, and we have two mechanics that have desks in there. On that bottom picture, you say it's only six-foot wide, so there's very little room in there. And so a lot of that diagnostic tools and whatnot also kind of, they get very dirty, and we need to have a better place to keep them clean. Our existing restroom, it did, it's not ADA compliant. Also, there's a women's restroom in there that is very small. You gotta walk into the door, in through the door of the men's, and then directly off to the left. And it's just very small, and I don't think any of the women that go in there like that one bit. The men's restroom, there's just not enough room there. There's one toilet, one urinal, sink there, and there's a bunch of lockers in there. And so it gets pretty unpleasant in there, too, at times. We just wish we had a separate locker room. Then, too, we do not have enough lockers in that room for everyone, and we have some large lockers and some very small lockers. And a lot of times, the guys need the bigger-sized locker for their boots, chaps, coveralls and stuff. Then we can go on to the service mechanics bay there. Occasionally, we get, when we get really heavy rains in it, I only remember it maybe happening twice, where the water kind of comes through them front doors and has flooded it out, and then the water will go into the break room, the bathroom. And I think it was last time we got like an inch or two deep in that whole area. We also have kind of a sewer issue. We've got like three sewer drains in there for any, you know, snow that melts off the trucks, or we're washing the floor, whatever. Those occasionally, quite occasionally, back up, and will pull out about 10 feet and then go back down. So it makes for a stinking mess in there to kind of clean up. The shop, that's where we service our dump trucks, graders, pickups, and everything in there. And it's, it's very tight. There's like four columns that are kind of in the way. You can't lay down any, the wing's very good. It's just really tight. And the doors in there, too, are very short. We can just now get our graders in there and our trucks in there, but if the graders get any taller, I mean, just a couple inches taller, we're not going to be able to get them in there. And then our oil storage containments, we do not have a decent place to keep our oil. The oil barrels are up in a second-story area where we have some parts, and then the oil one gets delivered, he drags out a hose, has to stick it through a little door, and then walk up the steps and finish pulling it through. It's just not very convenient. And if we have any type of a spill, we do have a spill kit there to clean things up, but we really don't have a good containment around there. It would be nice, too, that if our service mechanic could have a platform lift hoist to get the trucks up off the ground. Right now, he's on a creeper, and he's pretty much rubbing his belly to try and get underneath these trucks, to try and grease them and change the oil. And it's just really hard for him to do. I think that is it for the mechanics bay. Parts room is broke up into four different rooms. Two areas are upstairs, so you gotta carry the boxes up and down, which I feel is not very safe to do. We just need some more storage space in there to better organize what we have and make things maybe a little bit more secure. But the biggest thing is having everything just split up into the four rooms and just not being as organized as we should be. Then, too, I just wanted to say a couple more things. I know with the new shop, that, too, I guess, yeah, that, too, was, had like an outside area to wash out the dump trucks, and this new shop would have an area outside with a fire hose. Right now, we just use a garden hose. We don't have real good water pressure over in our wash bay, so washing out our trucks is a bit hard. I guess I missed one slide here for the sign shop, which was part of the old wash bay, and now we moved our sign shop in there a long time ago. It's very small. You can just barely get the truck in the door. You can see that top-right picture, there's a beam that you pretty much have to pull right up to, and then on the backside of the truck, there's like, you have to walk sideways to try and get in there to go up to the office, which is upstairs. And yet, too, is very small and can get very dirty just because of the poor ventilation up there. When the truck's in there, you cannot really pull the signs out from our storage or work on any of the signs, but we always have to back our truck out. Would be nice to be able to have a little bit, bigger area, maybe be able to work on the signs, load the signs inside. You know, if it's a rainy day or something, we can get everything ready to go for the next day. And then, too, it would be nice if we had a better wash bay that would be in this new building. We could get a couple trucks in there and get them washed, and then we would have an area to pull them into the main shop to let them dry before we stuck them out into, some of the trucks have to go out to the cold storage area and get greased and have to dry off before they go out there, so their brakes don't freeze. And then, also, too, it'd be nice to have a large break room area where we could host meetings and have the meetings on rain days or days when we, it's too cold to be out there, cut and brush or whatever. And I think that would just be a lot better for us, just to have our quarterly and annual meeting whenever it worked out best for us, so we're not losing out on time working out on the road on a nice day because we had to schedule a meeting out at the shooting range. So I don't think I have anything more at this point to talk about, so Kathy, get back to it.
Okay, thank you, Wayne. So we're gonna continue on unless there's any questions about the deficiencies of the existing shop. We're gonna continue on with a proposed concept for a new building, and Ryan's gonna come and speak about that.
So I'm gonna cover a few things on some different shops that we've looked at, different facilities, some of the features that we liked from those. A lot of our ideas came from a shop that we visited up in Fayette County that they've recently built, so it was about a 30,000-square-foot facility. We also did go and tour the City of Cedar Falls facility and the City of Waterloo's facility, which several of you, several of you did attend with us, so that was much appreciated. This is a picture of the shop that was built in Fayette County. So again, it's about a 30,000-square-foot facility. They had kind of both a separated men's and women's locker room and then separate restrooms from those locker rooms. Again, you know, some of the things in here that were nice is there was just a lot more room in there, plenty of lockers. They were much larger lockers. A lot of little things they thought about in that facility were kind of nice, and just from how they're gonna clean the facility, how they're gonna maintain the facility, you know, how they're gonna continue to make that a nice facility for them in the future. So that was definitely interesting to walk through, so. They had some separated office and break room spaces, so they had a larger break room space that could also be broken out into kind of different tables and chairs for training or larger group meetings. And they had several different offices in there where they had their road foreman, quarry foreman, bridge foreman, all able to kind of sit down and meet, you know, have a conference space for them to, you know, discuss the different days or weeks' schedules. Their main shop portion consisted of, I believe it was four or five different bays that they could pull vehicles into. They were all kind of double-deep, so they could have a truck up front and a truck in the back by the, by the doors. They did have this larger truck lift, which Wayne had mentioned earlier, that was a nice feature. It's easy to pull a truck into, lift an entire vehicle up and do the service and maintenance in a much more efficient and ergonomic fashion. So it's definitely nice to see some of those things incorporated. Their parts room was just right off their main shop, so they had most of their parts stored in there. And then they did have a kind of mezzanine level above where they could keep a lot of tires or other parts that weren't accessed as often. One of the other features that was nice was a separate bay just for welding. So it was built so they could have some longer-term projects and fabrication projects in there. They moved all the tools, saws, drills, those kind of things that they needed into, into one place. It was a separate location from the rest of the facility just for maintaining fumes and other things that you have to control with welding. Lastly, towards the end of their facility was a drive-through wash bay. We'll say this is kind of a semi-automated wash bay, so they did have a, like an underbody wash that as you drove into the facility would at least automatically clean the underbody, and then the rest of their washing was done by hand, just with standard spray wands. Some of the big differences with this compared to what we do now, we have one bay that you can pull into and you can wash in there. Everything is just done by hand now, but we can get one truck in there, and they're done. They have to back out, and then the next truck can pull in. Like Wayne had mentioned, they usually have to drive in, and it's one truck at a time. They'll then take that truck to a different warm location to get it dried off and ready to go for the next day, but it is definitely a timely process for us currently. This would allow us to get a lot more trucks through, almost in a, say, car wash fashion with our staff, to keep the trucks clean and get them all ready for the next day. Some of the stuff we have looked at, kind of drawn up at this point, is kind of a conceptual layout, just based on some of the size and scale of what we've seen. Actual layouts and things like that would obviously change and develop as we start working with an architect for the project, but this just kind of shows an overview of the entire site and then kind of just a, you know, one of the concepts we've looked at for how we could lay something out in that northern portion with a main facility, and then just plans for future expansion as we go. So we can zoom in a little more on that, but that portion on the bottom would just be kind of a representative shape of what that Fayette County shop would be like, about that same scale on the site. There are some things we liked in going to the Waterloo and Cedar Falls facilities, where they did have a attached indoor parking portion. I definitely think that would be something good to at least plan for the ability to do in the future as we're developing the site, but currently what we're looking at and planning with our, you know, budget requests now are just the southern portion of that, which would be the main maintenance facility. So we kind of get into some of the costs. We've talked with an architect a little on just kind of giving some estimates and everything put together for the shop. What we're looking at now is about $8 million for the building cost itself, that we kind of split between a couple different fiscal years for construction purposes. We do have engineering fees, again, split kind of over several fiscal years for design and construction engineering, and then some miscellaneous costs for various equipment and other things that would get incorporated into the building. So total about an $8.8 million project, just for that south portion we're looking at. It's something we do, you know, why we're looking at some of this now is kind of how, you know, planning through some of this and what those future costs may be, if we start to look at this larger expense being forecasted, even just at a 4% increase over some years, can drastically change our project costs in the future. So we just felt like this was a good time to move forward with this and start this project sooner. So right now, we do have, in our fiscal '25 budget, about $270,000 budgeted for, to start the engineering services portion of it. We would probably be putting together an RFP shortly after budget if this is something you guys approve us moving forward with, and hopefully starting that design work in the next fiscal. So as we start to look at planning for the, the building construction cost itself, we've kind of looked through our budget and made some, some kind of forecasts on what we think we can pull from our fund balance. So both in FY '26 and again in FY '27, we think we could pull about $1 million from each of those fiscal years to spend down some of our fund balance to contribute towards the building. Obviously, that leaves a large portion of that project remaining to fund, so that's where we are coming to you guys with a request for capital purchase for that. So that's where that is with that. So is there questions anyone has on building, our existing facilities or the proposed facilities?
That was a great, great presentation, everyone. I appreciate it. Ryan, I'd like to go see the Fayette facility sometime. If that can be arranged, I could go on my own or something or whatever, too, but I'd like to see that, if that's, if that's kind of the closest one that we're looking at modeling ourselves after.
Yeah, I think that would be, they're more than happy to show that facility off. I think we could coordinate something with them to head up there again with, yeah, that'd be great.
All right, thanks, Ryan.
And you selected that one really kind of as your, as the one of choice. I know you said, looked at Waterloo, looked at Cedar Falls.
I think there are a lot of operations that are similar with how, with how their facilities built and structured. Like I said, there are features from all of the facilities that we do like. You know, both Waterloo and Cedar Falls had a dedicated room for oil storage and oil containment. That's not something the Fayette shop had, but it is nice to see that feature, and it's probably something we'll look at constructing in ours. So I mean, there's, there's definitely gonna be little pieces we pull from the different facilities we do visit, so it's nice to see how a lot of different people approach the same problem, so.
I don't remember it being touched on in the slides, but this, this design does include the overhead crane, correct?
Yeah, so the Fayette shop actually had three or four different overhead cranes in it to go to, you know, in, they, they could pretty much get to any portion of their floor storage or that mezzanine level with an overhead crane, and they also had a separate one within their welding bay.
You mentioned, Ryan, I think, the wash bays, or maybe it was Wayne. I was gonna say, when you talk about the wash bays and going through kind of the drive-through process, almost like a car wash, then I assume you just take the cars immediately through, but they have to be stored somewhere for the drying out process or whatever still is that?
So, yeah, so right now, they would take them down to either the, the west shed is probably where most of them were stored. That is a heated building, so most of them do go there to dry off. Some of them, like Wayne had mentioned, do have to go up to our cold storage. They do have the ability to plug vehicles in up there for engine heat, but they don't have heat in that building, so they gotta make sure that vehicles aren't dried off well enough before they go up there to keep them from freezing for the next day.
Okay. That's what I was thinking. It allows you to get through quickly.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead, Chris, that's fine.
This is a question on the wash bay. I would say this is, this design is, is just half automated, just the bot, just the bottom portion? Are there, were there examples that are fully automated?
Waterloo does have one in their facility. That's a, that's a drive-through. That is automated. They do also have a second bay next to it where they can do some washing manually as well.
Is the feeling that the, that the fully automated is, is, is there would be time savings, I would imagine, but maybe the payoff isn't enough, or?
I don't know what some of the expenses were. I know Waterloo added theirs in later, I believe. They didn't have it when they initially built the facility, but they did add theirs later. There's, there's probably advantages and disadvantages, but it's definitely stuff we'll look at as we get further into a project.
Okay.
Probably, I was gonna say, the cost is probably considerable.
Cost maybe, maybe part of it. It may be something we plan on adding as time allows in the future, too, if need be.
And you mentioned adding the $1 million each year from your funding and the county considering remaining.
Yes.
And then the, I don't know if you addressed today, I think you talked about it when we went out, some of us and toured as far as the older buildings or the buildings that still, that would be there, would remain. This would allow you, this, the way you designed this plan allows you to utilize the buildings and continue operationally and just be building on that north.
Yeah, so by building that new building first, the new facility, facility will allow it to get finished, and then it's time to move into that before we would do some demolition or renovations on other buildings on the site.
Would any of those be, I was gonna say, were you gonna utilize all those that are currently there?
The, the main shop facility that we use now would be mostly demolished. There's in addition to the north, that's a newer precast facility that would remain. That's where two of our mechanics are housed currently.
So we're good on the salt dome? You know, it's got a relatively new roof, like that's, the lifespan is there.
Yeah, the main structure, that salt dome's in pretty good shape. There is some minor repairs we need to do to the exterior, but that's something to, just our staff can address.
Okay.
And the hoop building is relatively new. That's been done the last five, six years, has it been? Yeah, so there's been some minor maintenance done on that over the years, but both of those are in very good shape.
I kind of agree with Chris, as far as if there is a time then we get, some, some of us would be willing to go up and take a look at it, and this is actually kind of designed after their operations. It might be beneficial to us to see it, but.
Yeah, that'd be good.
So that'd be great, thank you. It was nice to see Cedar Falls. I know that was the one I, as well as touring your facilities, too, to really kind of see them. It's been quite a while since I've been there. Any other questions or any other things to say about this part of it, Kathy?
Yes, so I'm gonna be speaking to you now about what I'm calling Fleet Management for Black Hawk County. So over the years, I've heard from several department heads, can we, can we service their vehicles, or can we help them service the vehicles? And unfortunately, the answer has always been no. We, we can only use road use tax funds for road vehicles, vehicles that are in our department. However, we, you know, we're able to give them advice if that's needed. And I do think this is a good opportunity as we're talking about a new shop for ourselves, secondary roads. Can we build this to allow other county vehicles to be serviced? Can we take a more holistic approach to vehicle maintenance here at Black Hawk County? And so that's what I wanted to, just spend a few minutes talking to you about, and some of the advantages of doing that, perhaps. Currently, as you know, each department has their own fleet manager. We each budget for our own vehicles, our own purchases, our own repairs. We, we do that individually in our own silos, so I believe there's a lot of duplication. None of us are real experts. I mean, us and conservation are probably the experts because we have our own mechanics. I'd like you to consider a fleet management program that eliminates some of that duplication. I'd like you to consider a fleet management program that eliminates some of that duplication. I think it can give us better service to ourselves, to the county as a whole, and would make us more efficient. Just taking a brief look at the number of vehicles that are in this county, we, I contacted the various departments who have vehicles, and even those departments who do not have vehicles, who may want to use a vehicle someday in the future. So I'm sorry, I forgot to put the number in here, but it's about 165 vehicles in the county. We do have in conservation, we also have some other pieces of equipment that you may not consider a vehicle, but do need service, such as lawn mowers, all kinds of hand tools, smaller power tools, generators, et cetera, et cetera. So those do take time away from our mechanics to work on those as well. And you can see that currently, our departments, their vehicles are serviced by various locations. The sheriff's department utilizes Dan Deary to do most of their repairs and warranty work. The city of Waterloo does help out three of the departments, health, veterans affairs, and accessory, they take their vehicles there to be serviced. And then emergency management and building maintenance, as I understand it, they have told us that they seek out vendors in the community to take their vehicles to for various service throughout the year. It was hard to get a cost to compare all of these different departments, because no, in reporting, we got different timelines for the reporting. The city of Waterloo gave us their costs over a calendar year of 2023. The sheriff's office gave it to us in a fiscal year. So more study would be needed on that, but it looks like cumulatively, over the last one to two years, three years, in a 12-month period, the county was spending about $75,000 on vehicle repairs. This does not include what we ourselves spend in secondary roads, because we are a separate fund, so we have to keep that separate. And it does not include what conservation spends, of course, on their vehicle repairs. I haven't included them in this list because I'm not proposing that the county, we would do that work. For example, building maintenance told us that some of their own labor costs were not included in these numbers that they provided to us. So probably a bit more study would be needed on that cost. There is an example.
Those were, those were just the labor costs or not labor and parts?
Most of them were labor and parts. For example, city of Waterloo, Dan Deary, I believe those were the labor and the repair, excuse me, the parts and the labor costs to do those repairs and maintenance services. However, building maintenance did say that they did not include some of their own employee costs in that number. So there is an example we can look at here in the state of Iowa that may, I believe is worthy of looking at. Scott County is a similar sized county to us, and they did, about 10 years ago, they started looking at this, their own fleet management in Scott County. They were very siloed, just like we are today. Each department did their own thing, did their own budgeting, did their own repairs, was responsible for all that individually. At one point, they decided back in 2011 that they wanted to hire a consultant to study this. And so in 2012, Mercury and Associates did provide them a study, I can definitely provide this to all of you, but they did provide a study to Scott County. And I would like to share with you some of the outcomes of the asset of fleet management, or excuse me, assessment of fleet management and maintenance practices for Scott County. Overall, the study did say that they, the people at Mercury Associates did believe there would be some levels of service improvements by consolidating. There would be some efficiencies realized by consolidating into one fleet management department at Scott County. Three of the recommendations there were that they should, there was a need for a centralized fleet supervisor, and to provide these services under the administrative level of the board of supervisors. The best solution for them, for Scott County, was to build a centralized facility for providing this central fleet services to the county vehicles. And then the governance of this program would be the responsibility of a fleet advisory board and a fleet manager. And I should say that Scott County did not build a separate facility. They, what they did was they added on another bay to the secondary roads facility. So some of these recommendations have been implemented by Scott County and some of them have not. I have a few pages here of some of the other important details that were provided in the report as recommendations to Scott County. Like I said, they were told to build a centralized facility. They should hire enough mechanics so that they could provide services to all of the county vehicles. In this study, they, it outlines how the number of mechanics is arrived at, depends on the size of your fleet and the types of vehicles in your fleet, but there is a way to calculate how many vehicles a mechanic can service on an annual basis, for example, and then how many you would need to fulfill that in your own employment. Of course, they should develop a preventative maintenance plan for all their vehicles so that they meet warranty requirements, and they're being serviced in a timely fashion. And you want to be accountable to that preventative maintenance plan. You want to make sure that 95% of the time, you're meeting those targets of getting these vehicles serviced on that timeline. The recommendation was made to provide a fleet management inventory system software to be used in the shops, in the shop. We are currently budgeting for that in FY '24. We're waiting till our new shop foreman arrives to help us select that software, but some of the work that can be done with a fleet management inventory system, F-M-I-S, I'll just call it, would be setting timelines for work that has to be done, putting out jobs for each mechanic, for example. It could be used for an inventory tracking system. The auditors have told us we need to do a better job of managing our inventory. Fleet management software, we already know that would help us get better at having a better control of our inventory. Another recommendation was to establish a formal training program for the mechanics, so that they are being trained properly on new technologies that come up with in automotives and whether it's heavy diesel vehicles, such as our motor graders or dump trucks, and even sedans and light duty pickups, for example. They were urged to develop and implement a quality assurance program to gauge how well they are repairing, making repairs. For example, if a vehicle keeps coming back to the shop because of the battery keeps dying, for example, then that needs to be tracked and monitored, and notes taken and put into the inventory system to figure out why this is happening and how do we prevent it from happening again. Being more accountable with those repairs, so that vehicles do not have to come back time and time again for the same repair. There would be some protocols set up for emergency services types of needs, and those could be everything from, for example, for our department not having to send a mechanic out in the snow because we have a motor grader on the side of the road. Maybe we should just be hiring a tow truck, which we do, to haul it back in instead of sending our mechanics out there to try and fix it. Maybe it's just more cost effective if we just send them, just tow it in immediately. The other day, we heard that veterans affairs needed a tow truck for their own, one of their vehicles. This fleet management system would be set up to have a tow truck on call. They would know what to do, or they could call the fleet manager, and the fleet manager would be able to help them, tell them exactly what to do in this case, and where to, we would bring the vehicle to the county shop for repairs. Other things in the report were establishing eligibility for take-home vehicles, for example, reimbursement rates for when people want to use their own vehicle, but a county vehicle's available, or when they have to use their own vehicle because a county vehicle is not available. There should be different reimbursement rates for those types of uses. And then some bigger recommendations were to formalize a formal, a motor pool in this, depending on the size that you need, this might only be one or two vehicles. But it would allow departments that don't have a vehicle, for example, like the board of supervisors or HR, if they need a vehicle to go to Des Moines for the day, they would be able to check a vehicle out. There would be assurance that this vehicle, this fleet of vehicles, whatever the size, is being serviced, and it is available to check out for these intermittent uses. It would allow different departments to have someone to rely on with decisions about renting versus leasing versus purchasing equipment, whether that's any types of equipment. There could be some expertise developed through a fleet manager. There would be established protocols for specifications. And then finally, there were recommendations in the report about how to pay for a program like this. And I'll get to that in a minute. Just to speak, just a bit more briefly on a fleet manager, there were some guidance in the report that says the fleet manager, they would be overseeing and implementing policies and procedures for this fleet service for the county. They would oversee an advisory board, and their advisory board in Scott County consists of a person from each department, probably the person doing that job today, who has some knowledge about their fleet. And you would meet annually or quarterly and discuss various policies. At Scott County, they're making decisions together about which vehicles to purchase. So you could go as far as you wanted to with that advisory committee. The fleet manager would work closely with, for example, in Scott County, they work closely with, because they are located in the secondary roads shop, they work closely with those mechanics, those, that shop foreman, those parts and inventory clerk. Scott County did just recently hire a new fleet manager. They'd had one in the past, but that, it became open again. And in speaking with them, just in the last month, the month after Christmas, last month, they did hire a new fleet manager, who has a really good mix of experience with leadership, as well as he has been a mechanic in the past. So we want, ideally, you would be looking for someone who knows some of the technical details about doing work on vehicles, but also has been in a management position in the past. So how to pay for this program? One option provided by this study is to set up a replacement reserve fund, so that when, for example, vehicles are being serviced at the secondary road shop, for example, the fleet manager would be billing back to each department the cost of the parts and the labor, and with this type of program, you would charge back for a replacement cost and some of the overhead. For example, overhead to pay for the fleet manager's position. It could be that no, departments are not having to budget for vehicles themselves, it could be coming out of a different fund, this replacement reserve fund. So there's information provided on this in the report, and Scott County has implemented a portion of those policies in that regard. So some possible next steps to move forward with a fleet management program at Blackhawk County. We have talked to Mercury and Associates. We could hire, you all could decide to hire a consultant. We did talk to Mercury last week, and they gave us an estimate to do this study of about $40,000 to $60,000. You could do a study similar to what Scott County has done, or you could just read the report, and we can implement some of the recommendations from that report. The reason I'm bringing this up to you now is, we, if you are interested in that, we would like to know how much space would need to be created to facilitate doing maintenance on other county vehicles. You know, it's that, the space decision, if we're allowed to go forward with building a new shop, that would need to be decided and, before those plans could be finalized. So I urge that you consider this program. I do think there could be some efficiencies for all of our county departments, and I would invite any other department heads to speak about their own situations if they would care to.
Yeah, thank you for doing that, Kathy, because I was going to say, this isn't just for the board, it was for input from others, too, if there was anyone online or in the room that would like to comment on it.
Good morning.
Morning.
Sheriff Thompson, on behalf of the sheriff's office, this is a very intriguing potential that we are entertaining of. We've had this conversation clear back when Rick Abbott was my chief, and we talked about it. We did pursue Waterloo, trying to find other options. We've not always been satisfied with the level of service that we've got in other places. In fact, very early on in my tenure as sheriff, I purposely and intentionally went back out for bid for our repair and maintenance services, and ended up with the same company, only paying 10% more for the same quality and the same services. So lesson learned on that one, and never put it back out for bid again. But the realities for us are, I think, if we can keep it within the county and control costs through volume discounts and focus on, you know, localized employees, we probably are doing a better service for ourselves. We tend to find that sometimes there might be a deal or some sort of benefit to the vendor that, boy, there seems to be a run on rotors and brakes this month, because every vehicle I take in surprisingly needs rotors and brakes, even though they only have 20,000 miles on them, or 15,000 miles on them. It's weird, but to have a little more localized control within the county seems to make some sense to us. We know that there's some upfront expense associated with that, but if you consolidate all vehicles under one roof, put a fleet manager in charge of it, you're going to get better control over your entire fleet. And so we're definitely entertaining and partnering with Kathy on this effort, if you entertain moving forward with it.
Thank you. Kathy, do you have any thoughts or considerations, I guess, for space? Just while you're, I mean, not even in the immediate, like you're talking about for your 30,000 square foot building, but what something like this would be, I guess, if you added a bay or whatever?
So in Scott County, like I said, the decision was made to not build a separate facility as a standalone centralized shop. They opted to just go with adding on one bay to the secondary road shop, and I believe that engineer told me that was done in 2016. So a couple of years after the report was finished, that's how Scott County wanted to do it. This report, and they do, and Scott County does have more vehicles than Blackhawk County. They service ambulances, they service, I want to say, close to 300 vehicles. So it's quite a bit larger fleet that they're servicing. The study showed at that time in 2012 that they needed between one and 1.5 mechanics to take this, all these vehicles on. So we would anticipate the same amount of store or space needed, two bays or one double bay, that type of thing. If you chose to do a study, obviously, that could be more defined, or we could just build on one double bay, for example.
So they had provided like an ambulance service, so it was a county service that they were utilizing, or did they go outside kind of the realm of Scott County vehicles to?
I'm not quite sure. That engineer told me that those were under the county's purview. They also service library vehicles, so they just do a lot more, include a lot more vehicles. And that may be, we did speak with them last fall, some of us in this room were on that call, and they did have more of a, that finance director felt it important that they have a more holistic approach to, because it was saving money. He felt that that was one way to save money, was to get as many vehicles as possible serviced by us, and that was their approach. Doesn't mean we would have to take that same approach with, you know.
Kathy, I like this concept. One question, what's the reasoning for not including conservation? One question, what's the reasoning for not including Conservation in this?
So, in the Scott County example, I don't know for sure. It might be that they're, I mean, they have their own, they had their own mechanic in Scott County, they had their own facilities. In Blackhawk County, we are the same. They have a new building, a newer building. They also have a brand-new shop that was built after they moved into that building on Airline Highway. So, they employ one mechanic, they have a brand-new shop. So, that wasn't what I was proposing as part of going forward, but that is up to you all
You were just looking kind of from the outside service providers, I guess, to us for right now.
Those departments that are not serviced by themselves, yes.
Although it could make some sense to consider, like I said, Conservation or looking at, I mean-
Yes, and their finance director did tell us last fall that they were, in the near future, they were probably going to be incorporating Conservation. And I don't know if it's because their maintenance facilities at Conservation were getting aged and would need replacement, or I don't know what spurred that decision on. We didn't get into all of those details.
Not seeing anybody to say ask any questions, but I was going to say, are there other questions? Or Chris, I know you did, I don't know, Dan or Tom are even still on with this, but I'm-
Well, I just appreciate how much Kathy put into this. I like the concept.
So, at least intriguing to you, at least at this point in time, too? Dan?
Yes.
Just as far as like maybe more information or whatever, thank you.
I'll say, I'm not even really sure that we need a study on it, but, because I think it's, I think a lot of it, the study's been done by Scott County, which was similar enough, so it's, but I do like, I do like this concept. I guess the one concern, and you addressed a little bit, is just finding the right balance of, you know, making sure that we're getting the vehicles in and out in a timely manner. Because right now, they're spread across all these different vendors, you know, spread across all these different mechanics. We just don't want late times that are crippling to operations.
Right, I feel, I guess, this small department, fleet services, if you want to call it that, they, their customers would be the rest of us. So, they would have some accountability to the rest of us. This report does say that you should have formal agreements with the other departments so that they know what the expectation is, like the cars are washed, for example, when it gets returned back to that department. It gets done in so many, there's a timeline of, you know, so the other departments know what the expectation is. So, we're almost, they're almost acting like an outside vendor, but yet they're still a part of the county, and this department would very much want to give a good service to the other departments. That would be their job, and we would expect them, I believe we would expect that.
I think that, to Chris's point, though, you bring up a good point as far as the coordination of that, that's something everybody's not been used to, and they've all done their own things, you know, kind of autonomously, and makes a difference when you wanted to coordinate your own car maintenance and service, you know, then they tell you it's going to be a couple of weeks or whatever for things, and we're not always accustomed to doing things in that manner, so it would be some adjustment from us as well. But as you said, when it's managed much the same as if you had private vendors, that makes sense, not having-
And quite frankly, one thing I'd like to look at as well is how do we incorporate dispatch into all of this? In the facility, I mean.
Kind of like on the same location or in the same building?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, we haven't really looked at that. That has been mentioned, I think, as far as that location at one point was talking about other facilities, so.
So, we believe there would be extra space on those grounds, on the Longfellow grounds, for example, where we would demolish the existing shop structure there on the very south end of that location. That could probably serve as some space for building another building. In speaking with various people, I'm told that the 911 center would have to be, would be a much different type of construction than what we would need for a mechanic shop or automotive shop, for example. Speak on that part.
Yeah, I was going to say, some difference, I'm sure, because I'm thinking here's a little more rough space, I guess, for the types of buildings and services.
Like a hardened structure, hurricane-proof kind of construction. I think the cost and the, you're talking about kind of a more shop-type material. So, that's probably true. That's the first I'd heard that we might put a dispatch center in a facility like that. But yeah, I think you're right. I think there's probably some considerations that, not just the equipment and the IT and everything else that would have to go to that, but the construction itself, if you're going to put emergency services into it, you want to make sure that you're making it, you know, a hardened facility that can withstand tornado and that kind of stuff.
So, Dan, I don't know if you even have enough information to elaborate on that, but were you thinking, could you consider not necessarily having to be a part of this type of facility if it was different, but maybe using that location for additional building, perhaps, if that was needed?
Yes. Matter of fact, Rory's been trying to get together with me. He has some ideas, and I'm curious to hear his ideas. And I'm supposed to get together with Chief Leibold next week to discuss this further as well.
Okay, I think Rory was in the room earlier, but I think he left, so, sorry, he's not here, but yeah, it sounds like you've got something kind of in the works then to get back to everybody with, okay? Super. Okay. Any other questions or comments or considerations for that location?
Thank you, Kathy and everybody, for your work on this.
And like Chris said, I'm not sure it would take its own study, but maybe some of what Scott's got, you've kind of looked at that and evaluated some of that, too, but maybe us taking a look at some of those things, too, if those are considering them more, you know, be helpful, as well as the financing of it, I guess, too, a little bit to have more information and details on that. Thank you. Thanks for the work on it so far. I was going to say, bringing it to our attention.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything, nothing more on your building or presentation then? I was going to say, is there anything else from a budget perspective that anyone would like to discuss during this session while we're still open? I know we didn't plan for it, but it was just if anybody did. All right, we'll move on then for adjournment. Is there a motion for adjournment today?
So, moved.
Seconded.
Seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Well, same sign, the meeting's adjourned. Dave travels Dan and Get Better Chris.